At six P M on July tenth, twenty twenty-three, and I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor Troy Garner from the Fellowship of Faith Church to the podium to give our invocation.
Psalms of eleven and four says, "The Lord is in his holy temple; the Lord's throne is in heaven; his eyes behold the children of men." Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, your providential care of us. As the Psalms declares, you are sitting on the throne watching over us. Tonight, we ask that you will continue to be with Mayor Finley and the council persons. Be with them as they mediate the affairs of this city. Be with them as they meditate on the agenda items. May they motivate each other as they represent their prospective districts. And bless the citizens as they migrate through this great city of Madison. In your matchless majestic name, we pray that everyone say amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do. Under right creation, we have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two-two-two R. This is a contract for baseline sports construction. There's been a request to pull this from tonight so that we can take another look at it and go over a few terms. But that would be the only change I'm aware of.
Okay, that item's been removed, and the agenda is approved with that removal. Next, we have approval of the minutes, number twenty twenty-three dash zero-six dash W S. Need to approve?
Second.
Motion, second by Shaw. Motion by Spears. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Aye. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we have minutes number twenty twenty-three dash one-two dash R G dated June twenty-sixth.
Need to approve?
Second. Motion by Powell, second by Spears. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Abstain.
Okay, and the motion passes. We do not have any presentations and awards, so we will move to public comments related to agenda items. Each member has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and district. State the agenda item that you are speaking to, and save any general comments until the end of the meeting at that portion of the agenda. We have one comment card turned in for agenda-related items, and that's from Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening. Okay, I'm Bernadette Mayer. I'm in Heatherwood subdivision, and my city council representative is District Five. Okay, so there's a finance item with ADA sidewalk from ramps, and I guess that'll eventually lead to sidewalks on that particular item. And in introducing that, I understand new roads have new sidewalks and whatever, but I'm real concerned about all the other city sidewalk needs and to put more focus on all the other neighborhoods in the city that have been long neglected. And example now that on the mid-year budget, forty percent, ten percent completion, I guess, on the planning for the Mill Road sidewalk, Bradford Trailhead to Connyline Road. And this honestly got put up, and a representative ended up saying, "Oh, we wanted this since two thousand sixteen." Well, with a sixty million dollar city budget this last year, why some current things can't be done in those areas? Okay, so a second item on the agenda, engineering detail on the A E comm change orders for two hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. I really hope that there's going to be some discussion as to what the change order and what is being done as far as if it's going to be an improvement or whatever, and why this change order was necessary. Okay, on recreation, baseline sports LED lighting, one hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars. Okay, so I understand that on the mid-year budget, there's a phase-two street lighting for a half a million dollars, and Dublin Field for five lights for a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. So, and I understand, yeah, you know, these new recreation areas need the lighting, and you guys are obviously getting in great lighting. And I do understand about some of these recreational complex areas have outside, you end up having groups coming in that, you know, will use the facilities and all that kind of stuff. But we really do need, and I guess the city streets, you know, a lot has been discussed as far as, you know, number one, review what was paid and what's been received on those millions of dollars that we had a bond for. Why some of the tree branches can't be trimmed that obscure streetlights. What streetlights can benefit from longer arms, which probably never got really looked at with that whole big multi-million dollar thing? And what streets need additional mounted lighting? Okay, so under legal franchise agreements, describe the city benefits with Crown Castle Fiber and Allogi-
The time is up now. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have no other comment cards turned in, so if anyone else would like to address the council, please state your name and your district and the agenda item you're speaking to.
Margie Daly, Collins District. I'm going to start off with this change order. This is actually the second change order, so that brings the change orders up to a half a million. We already gave thirty-seven million to this project. Why are we giving more? What does mo- where are they mobilizing? Mexico? Because I don't understand what mobilization and adding days costs another quarter million. Okay, franchise agreements. You're going to take five percent from us because you know the franchise fee get passed on to us. Five percent on every bill, every citizen in Madison that has WOW or this castle crown that I don't even know why we're getting something from Pennsylvania. But basically, you have become pimps. You are pimping out the taxpayers of Madison. Okay, so now, what my other question is, is this related to broadband LLC with the same P O box as Madison Forward? Then, two-eleven, another contract with no bid. Then, two-twenty and two-twenty-one, vaca- vacation of the drainage. So what my question is, are we barbaric or is this archaic how we're flooding the other streets with residents on them to open up sewers for these new shanty towns? Because you flooded Portal. You know, you took out the railroad tracks. I pray every night we don't have a derailment the way that thing looks over there on Shelton because it's eroded underneath the train tracks. And then, two-ten, there's no definition for media streaming. What is that? News media? This is under your new licenses. Now, we're going to get a license if you liquor license, distillery license, liquor manufacturing, and media streaming. I would like to know what that is, and I would also like to know if these franchise fees apply to now Wi-Fi because we never got a franchise fee for Wi-Fi, so have you pimped us out on the Wi-Fi too? That's my question. As far as the lighting, I think you took that off the agenda. And is there a public hearing tonight? Because I see that liquor license. But my concern, are you going to make the liquor licenses now have another license for manufacturing liquor? Like, I'm a little confused, and I have no clue what that media streaming license is for. Do we have to get that if we put something on our iPad? Or is that just for news media? Will I vote have to get it to stream on YouTube? I mean, how far are we going with this stuff? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on an agenda-related item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
The finance committee has reviewed current realistic bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
The motion passes. Presentation report, beginning with Mayor Finley.
Okay, a couple of things. One, redistricting. So, we have received back from Slaughter and Associates the redistricting maps, and we'll be in a position five-thirty next Monday night here in City Hall chambers for them to show the community what they've come up with. Again, their goal is to redistribute the growth that we've had into seven equally-sized districts. So, five-thirty next Monday night in City Hall. Secondly, I think we have one chart on our streetlights. I want to go ahead and show that. So Roger Bellamy has run those numbers for us. Hopefully, there you go. Nope, that's not. It's a good map, though.
Mm-hmm. Very clear. While we're waiting on this, will we be receiving the redistricting information before Monday, or?
You're going to, what are you going to do with council? Friday afternoon?
Okay. Any particular time, or you'll just let us know?
Ten, ten-thirty-seven and thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll be there then. Thank you.
All right, guys. We'll switch past streetlights. I can give you the numbers based on FY twenty-one. It was five hundred and thirty-five thousand. FY twenty-two, it was six hundred and fourteen thousand. With only three months left in this fiscal year, it's one hundred and sixty-five thousand. So if you want to know what the change over to LED lighting is doing, pretty substantial savings for our city. It comes up in a slide if we can get it and pull it up.
There it is.
There you go. So, there you go. So you can see it right there? Nope, we like the other view better. There you go. So FY twenty-one, five hundred and thirty-five thousand for the total year. FY twenty-two, six hundred and fourteen, as you can see, with nine months gone, one hundred and sixty-five. So it is making a difference. And then, we again, with what we have, we've had meetings with Huntsville Utilities and Nebraska working on phase-two to get that out for the community. Number three, I want to talk a little bit about the Trash Pandas. You know, we all talk about Town Madison and what's happening over there and the excitement. This week alone, six games, over thirty thousand citizens and community members came through. Just Toyota Field by itself with a record number July fourth of seventy-five hundred. So the largest crowd ever in their history, thirty thousand total over the week. So another beacon. That's with three days. Basically, they were fighting rain throughout the course of that. So excitement there. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about July third. First, to Cory and his team, and then again, to police, fire, Public Works. Thank you, guys, for all that you did at Dublin Park for our community. We had to fight rain, and yet came up with something that was really exciting. Just to let folks know, we also had a pickleball tournament there. We had sixty-six teams that were in the pickleball tournament. So regardless of what you email that you received this morning from Margie, I'm always unhappy daily, that we just, just don't, you know, I just don't understand what we continue to get. We also have forty-eight members last Wednesday alone that in turn came for just league play, and they had turned people away. So pickleball continues to be exciting. But I wanted to end with about a two-and-a-half-minute video on what we had Monday night here in the city of Madison for our citizens, which I thought was really exciting. So now, if you guys can go ahead and play it. All right, so there's so much that goes into that celebration. Again, thank you to Cory and his team and everything that they've done. Public safety's there to make sure everybody stays safe. Again, it's a full day. It's a little fuller when there's not rain, but a great day. And then I'll end. I want to thank Bibi Achen. Bibi has a bunch of questions for every agenda, and she takes the time every Monday to call or come by and actually get the answers. We probably had twenty questions between two people today that they're just asking questions. I don't know if they even want the answers. They just find three minutes to be able to talk. So thank you to Bibi for all that she does to take the time and the investments that she makes to get the information that truly is something that means something. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. District one.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to echo what Mayor said. The fireworks show, every year, I think, gets better and better, and it was so cool to see different fireworks that I've never seen before. We just had a great time as a family. We won't have our Friends of the Library meeting tomorrow as the chair is out of town, so the next meeting will be August eighth. But we will have a Madison Arts Alliance concert this Thursday. Very well-known, well-loved local Madison band, Calypso Vision. If you like Jimmy Buffett, you'll love Calypso Vision. That'll be this Thursday at seven P M. At Home Place Park. We'll have food trucks. There'll be things for the kids to do. Dogs are welcome. Cats are not. So, but it's just a great family time. Hopefully, we'll get a little bit of a break with the weather, but encourage you to come out and come early for that concert. We're expecting a record turnout for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. District two.
Yes, tomorrow, there's a Tarkog Board meeting, and also our former first lady, Dana Trulock, is having an art show exhibit at Madison Library. If you have not had the opportunity to look at her art, she is one of the most talented artists I've seen in a long time. She is amazing. So please take the time. There's a reception-
Yes, at six.
No, Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
No, it's tomorrow.
I think it's tomorrow at six.
It is tomorrow at six, yes. Thank you, sorry.
At the Madison Library, no.
Senior moment. But if y'all have a chance to come out tomorrow, you can not only see her artwork, you can visit with her for a little bit, and that's all I have.
Thank you. District three.
Just real quick, I'd like to thank Madison Fire for you guys going out, police, everybody that was involved with the fire that happened at Main Street Cafe. Yeah, it's an old building. It's kind of a pillar of our community. It's where a lot of people go. There's a lot of memories there. You know, people that have worked in City Hall, some of them have, you know, not worked there, but that was City Hall at one time. It was even a fire station, I think. So a lot of history there. Thank you, guys, for getting out there quick and taking care of that. And they're going to be back up and running, I think, a couple of months. Is that right? And so I appreciate that. And, you know, I normally don't address people when they come up and speak here, but I'll just tell you this, calling names, it really doesn't make a difference. All that does is it shuts me down, and I don't want to hear you. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. District four.
No new business.
District six.
I only have one thing tonight. I know that'll suckle out of you. I really have to give my heartfelt congratulations to the Madison Police Department. They did something that is so outstanding. I don't know how many of you are aware that they are part of the CALIA accreditation, and they just went through a new accreditation. There's only five law enforcement agencies in the country that have this. There's less than three percent in the state of Alabama. They went through it, and I'm going to read what they said because it is so amazing. "Assessment team also examined other key areas such as patrol operations, E nine-eleven communications and dispatchers, departmental budgeting, handling of property and evidence, and the police investigation operations and techniques. In the end, one hundred and sixty-four mandatory CALIA standards and additional nineteen standards to which the agency follows were assessed, and proofs of compliance for each standard were reviewed. The assessors concluded that the Madison Police Department was in full compliance with one hundred and eighty-three percent, one hundred and eighty-three of the CALIA standards with no standards, issues, waivers, or other issues. This perfect assessment was due to the hard work and dedication of the department's CALIA management team, Captain Terrell Cook and Lieutenant Greg Dees, to the oversight and direction provided by the Madison Police Department command staff, and to the dedication and excellency of every member of the Madison Police Department. I just want to congratulate them on their perfection. This is not an easy thing to do, and they did a wonderful job." So I give my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of the police officers. They are always so kind and always so respectful. They are my heroes, and I just- I will give you, on behalf of Chief Gandy, the congratulations, and please share it with every one of the members. And that's all I have this night.
Thank you. District seven.
No new business.
Okay, I have one item that actually segues into board and committee appointments, and that is an appointment to place five on the Madison Police Citizens Advisory Committee. First, I want to thank Dwayne Kraft, who was originally appointed to that position. He served for a couple of years, and his job requirements required him not to be able to be on the committee and so because of his attendance at his job. So I am announcing that Dr. Yikin Bao will be the District Five replacement on that committee. He is a marketing professor at U A H and has lived in District Five for over twenty years. So congratulations to Dr. Bao, and I know he will do a great job. Next, we have public hearings. And Avani, you want to come forward?
Good evening. The revenue department has one public hearing tonight. We have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two-two-three. Wahanah Distillery LLC applied for a manufacturer liquor license for their location on ninety-five eighty-two Madison Boulevard with one, two, and three. This is a new request for a manufacturer liquor license at this location. Everything is in order for consideration. If you guys have any questions, the owner is in attendance.
And do we have anybody from the property here who wants to speak, or do they just want to? Okay, all right. So we will open public hearings. The public hearing will allow each speaker to speak for five minutes. Please state your name and district if you'd like to speak to this issue.
I'm sorry, I was telling Avani.
I'm a very happy person, by the way. And, you know, I'm sorry, when you start pimping us out at five percent on a franchise fee, I mean, come on, guys. That's really-
Do what you're talking about.
Okay, well, I mean, you're allowed to make comments. When I sit down and if I speak, I get told to shut up. Okay, well, I mean, you're allowed to make comments. When I sit down and if I speak, I get told to shut up. You know, it gets tiring. I'm a very happy person. I'm not happy at a five percent fee. I'm a senior citizen on a budget, and I know that that's going to hurt a lot of people, five percent on a franchise fee. So, what is going on with the liquor licenses? Are we no longer going through the state with this? We're calling it manufacturing? Is that manufacturing? Is that a distillery? What are the changes? I don't know. And I did call City Hall three times today, by the way. So, I'm curious to know what this is. Is it no longer going to be the state? Is it a city license? Are we doing a second license on top? What is going on with this?
So, we're going to let you, if you're done, if I'm done with all your questions, thank you, we'll answer them at the close of public hearings. Is there anyone else from the public who has a question or anything you'd like to state during public hearings? Then I will close public hearings. Avon, if you want to come up and just explain the distributor liquor license.
We don't require the same licenses as the state, so we are in compliance with the state.
And they charge any additional fee for doing that from the city? Is there a...
No.
Not on a three per... Okay, so that has nothing to do with this. Okay.
And this is probably very similar to what Black Patch has.
Exactly.
Okay. They'll just be making, I'm guessing, tequila. Making tequila?
Rum.
Rum, very good.
Rum, you heard it here first. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion in second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any further discussion?
You're welcome to Madison. Thank you.
And we're ready for a vote. Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And a motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Avon.
And department reports, beginning with engineering.
Okay, I have resolution number 2023-227R. Excuse me. This is authorizing change order number two on the contract with AECom Technical Services for project number 2022-009ITB. This is the City of Madison Interchange. Two hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty cents to be paid from the 2022 flyover bond issue.
Move to approve. Second.
Hey, you have a motion in second. Want to open it up for questions from councilmembers?
I actually had several questions. I contacted both Steve Smith and Michael Johnson today. They were very gracious and they provided quite a lot of information. Would you like to share that? Or would you like me to read out what you gave me?
I can give you a little bit of a brief summary of what you had asked. You were asking about what the change was. And basically, this is changing the route that the vehicles are making, the loading, the dump trucks are making from the quarry to the fill site. So, instead of coming down Madison Boulevard and going through a parking lot, they're going to stay on the interstate. And so, with that, we are subject to the ALDOT weight limit on the interstate to seventeen tons instead of twenty-two tons. It's just going to require more trucks. And so, it's going to require close to seven hundred more truck loads. There are more trips at thirty-six loads per day, which is what their maximum without having to store these trucks and stage them. Thirty-six trucks per day for nineteen days. So, that's about three hundred and eighty dollars per load.
And just to make sure, just to add some information, it was going to come on Madison Boulevard and on a sliver of land that the Breland Company had right next to Terramay Spa. We were going to come off of Madison Boulevard onto the interstate and do it that way where you could have had more weight and more trucks. With us redoing Madison Boulevard, we don't want all that on there. It's a safety hazard as far as those things slowing down and having to turn in.
To do a U-turn.
And a U-turn, which was not going to work well for our citizens. And then lastly, once we were done with the parking lot and everything that was happening, we were going to have to replace the parking lot, which would have cost us more money to do anyway.
Well, systematic maintenance for the parking lot during the loading.
Yeah, so it's one that just makes good sense to do right off the bat and is probably expediting the project anyway, so.
Any other questions?
Well, I just have one comment. This is a business parking lot, and there are several businesses that use this parking lot. And by having those dump trucks going in and out, I'm afraid we would have hampered the businesses. And that's the last thing we want to do, is slow down anybody's place of business.
How much does this eat into the contingency fee? Now, we had planned X percent. I don't know if this eating...
I don't have the exact number, but this increases the budget by about point six percent, something like that. The total projects, what, point zero six percent?
Zero, zero, six, yeah.
Okay.
Less than one percent.
Right, so point six percent, right, yeah.
And the bond money is performing better than we thought it would, too.
It's generating more, so we have the funds to cover the change order. Okay, any other questions?
Um, everybody about, not everybody, just, it adds a whole lot more detail. So, assuming fifty-two thousand tons of backfill of foundation and wall, average twelve trucks a day at three rounds at thirty-six loads a day. At twenty-two tons per load is seven hundred ninety-two tons a day for sixty-six days. Thirty-six loads a day at seventeen tons, so that's five hundred seventy-six tons a day, so eighty-five days. Eighty-five days, one of sixty-six days is nineteen days. Nineteen days for wall, four days for undercut removal, two days to drill shaft, two days for bridge. So, they actually have worked out why it came to fifty-four extra calendar days. So, I appreciated the extra detail just to truly understand what the work order was, what the changes were.
Yeah, it all boils down to about needing seven hundred, well, six hundred eighty-four more trips. And so, that's what the, that's what the change order was, correct?
Okay, we're ready for a vote. Yes. Motion second. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Nay.
And... Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
A motion passes.
And we hope to have at the next meeting the folks to come in, give us an update on the progress that's being made. If you drive by there, you can see it's substantial, but we want to make sure you guys get an update here at the council meeting.
From AECom.
From AECom, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Legal.
Good evening. We have two ordinances. Both would address franchise agreements. First is proposed ordinance number 2023-128. This would be for authorizing a franchise agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for small cell placement and installation of fiber lines. This would be the first reading, but Crown Castle is actually a center representative. If you have any questions about the operation, this would be them moving into Madison for the first time. So, there is somebody here available if you do want to talk with them. But this is just a first reading.
Okay.
Next up, we have proposed ordinance number twenty, I'm sorry, 2023-134. This is authorizing a franchise agreement with Knowledge Hunt Still Incorporated doing businesses WOW. This is for the operation and maintenance of a cable and broadband system within the city of Madison. This is the second reading on this. The first reading would have been on June twenty-sixth of 2023. One thing I think I should point out is that we have had a franchise agreement with WOW for some time, and this is a renewal of that. And the five percent franchise fee that's been referenced is the exact same franchise fee that has been paid before, and we're just carrying that fee over. So, this is not a new, a new fee that's going to be passed through. It may very well have been passed through all these years that WOW has had a franchise fee and paid us. But this is the compensation that we receive, of course, for offering our right of ways for them to go in and run their fiber line. So, we would, this proposed ordinance, unless there's any questions, this would be the actual second reading, and it would be ready for a vote.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion in second. Any questions? Could you elaborate on what media streaming means?
Media streaming. I think that the media streaming question might have been in reference to a new license that we were putting forward. I think that was the question. I don't know that it had any application to this particular contract.
Come up in planning.
Oh, okay, sorry. Alright, we'll wait for that one.
Grabbing you, I'm sorry.
Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And a motion passes. Thank you. Planning.
Good evening. Have proposed ordinance number 2023-220. This is the first reading for vacation of a utility and drainage unit at One Twenty Lake Crest Drive. And you can see there, it's on the side property line, and that's to accommodate a structure that they want to put a detached garage on the back of their property. So, we'll be back next week asking for your approval on that.
Right? It's the first reading, right?
It is just the first reading, that's correct. The second item is proposed ordinance number 2023-221. And this is for vacation of utility and drainage unit located within lots twenty-six through thirty-eight of the Heights Town Madison. There's also an exhibit that's coming up, right there. This is along Town Madison Boulevard. This is also a first reading. And you'll recall, a few meetings back, we had another slot of lots that were along Town Madison. It's the same thing, where we're vacating part of an easement, and we'll keep part of it for, because there's a water line there. But we'll be back at the next meeting with that.
Thank you. Recreation.
Good evening. I have resolution 2023-211-R. Authorizing a contract with Oakwood Tree Service for the removal of hazard trees along the Bradford Greenway in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. A hazard tree is any tree that can pose a threat to an individual or a property. We've got thirty-seven on this stretch of Greenway after our harvest did a survey. The price is amazing, considering the other quotes we got were more than double.
Move to approve. Okay, a motion and... Shaw, it's a second.
I get paid to sign.
Any questions or discussion? We're ready for a vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And a motion passes. Thank you, Corey. And now, revenue and proposed ordinance. You got it, you got it, okay.
Okay, this is the first reading for proposed ordinance number 2023-10. Amending chapter ten of City Code to add next business license titles, liquor manufacturer, and media streaming distribution. These codes are used when the Revenue Department issue a privileged license to a business. For the last couple of months, we have seen an increase in these type of services, and I feel it's appropriate to correctly license them and categorize them. An example of media streaming distributions are internet content creators such as podcast creators.
So, those are two separate things, liquor manufacturing?
Yes.
And media streaming distribution.
Correct.
It's basically an accounting thing that we're trying to bucket things in the correct bucket.
Correct.
So, she said it was for podcast creators, content creators and pop...
Internet content.
Internet.
Such as podcasts.
Yes, as an example, podcasts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, it's only businesses that are involved? It's only businesses? It's not like somebody, like anybody else that's doing anything else on the internet, any live streaming at all? It's just, what is defining it exactly? Because everybody does live streaming and stuff. It's a broadcast. So, what's defining this?
It's just internet content creators mainly for podcasts.
And if I could just add that basically, when you ever have a business license like this, if it's somebody who's just, you know, with their grandkids, not creating any sort of money, any revenue, then it would not be captured by any business license. So, you would have to actually make money from the streaming in order to qualify for the business license.
Correct. So, you're a straight-up business that applies for it.
Correct. That's all. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Now, we're at the portion of the meeting for additional public comments on general matters not related to the agenda. We've had three comment cards turned in. We will first begin with Mark Lambert. Please state your name, your district.
Good evening. Uh, Mark Lambert is my name. I'm in Cony District. I think that's two. Uh, I'm here to talk about quality of life. I know many of you, and you know me and my wife. But we've lived in Madison, I don't know, twenty-eight years now. I'm talking about quality of life. What's the number one sport in America today? What's the fastest-growing sport in America today? Pickleball. If you don't support pickleball, you're behind the times. My wife and I play in tournaments in Alabama, Georgia, and Tennessee. We've been to all kinds of rec facilities. Why don't we have them in Madison? I know we're building one south of sixty, five sixty-five, but that was promised, announced last year, but have we broken ground? Is it going to be this year? What's the delay? Last year, it's estimated twenty-three million people played tennis. You know how many people play pickleball? Thirty-six million. That's thirteen million more people. Nobody, very few people play tennis anymore. Go out to Dublin Park, which I am every night, by the way. Pardon me, I'm late for playing tonight. Go out to Dublin Park most any night. A slow night is thirty people playing, thirty people playing. How many people play tennis on those nights? I've been going out there a year and a half playing. A busy night in tennis is four. A busy night, you know how much a busy night is in pickleball out there playing? Sixty. We need courts. We need them now. Why are we so slow in courts? Sometimes, my wife and I go to Athens to play. We go to Opelika and play. Wow, they got great facilities. We go to Huntsville and play. We go to a place called Shurney in Huntsville. It's right off Sparkman Drive and not a very good part of town. And they got better courts than Madison. In Shurney, Shurney Center, off Sparkman Drive. Why don't we have courts? We got four courts up here by Discovery Middle School. Nobody plays tennis on them hardly. Nobody hardly. What, they're wasting away. I understand they got some lines, but who drew those lines? We're using tennis nets as pickleball nets. That's wrong. Would you play Alabama and Auburn, play a football game on a hundred-and-fifty-yard field versus a hundred-yard field? No. Would you play a basketball game with twelve-foot goals instead of ten-foot goals? No. So, why do we want to play a sport up here with the wrong-sized nets? If that's acceptable, your standards are too low. We need courts. We need them now. I could go on and on, but my time's about out. Anyway, I'm late to play tonight. That's why I'm dressed this way. Sorry. By the way, as I said, we travel around to a lot of facilities. We see lots of recreation facilities besides pickleball. We talk about quality of life in Madison. Our school system is great, but we need recreation facilities too badly. We are woefully behind the times in recreation facilities. Woefully behind the times. Go look around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Next is Jeff Boone.
Sorry, it might not be as exciting as the last one. Jeff Boone, District Seven. I'm requesting an update on any changes to legislation or zoning policy that could prevent a gun store from opening close to a school. For example, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, a gun store opened across the street from the school where the kids from the playground could see the stores. They heard public comments. They heard the anger and the parents. And within two weeks, they changed the zoning policy so that no more firearm sales could be done within a thousand feet of the school, right? Now, their policy isn't going to change what's already happened, and ours won't either. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do anything. So, please consider any changes that we can do going forward. Also, like, thank y'all for listening, because, you know, y'all have shown that y'all do care, and that is important to us. Thank y'all for working with the city, the city police, to get SROs at the schools, working with the school board to help push some safety measures that were eventually going to go in, but push them in a little bit quicker. So, thank you very much for that. But please, please provide updates. Let us know that y'all are still considering some options.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. And the last card that I have turned in is Bernadette Mayer.
Alright, so, the first thing I'm going to talk about is...
All right, so the first thing I'm gonna talk about is, countering what Mr. Lambert said, okay, so, yes, okay, twenty-three million people play tennis, thirty-six million play pickleball. Guess what? There are private tennis clubs, and I don't think that we need, everybody that wants to play pickleball, I don't think that we need to accommodate everybody that wants to play pickleball in the City of Madison. Number one, my daughters are now twenty-seven, twenty-nine. Back, back when they were little, and trying to find swimming lessons and whatever, even though I live in Madison, I, I ended up going into Huntsville to get swimming lessons, you know, because recreation couldn't keep up, you know, with the demand out here. And I, I totally understand all that. And, and I understand pickleball is a very fun recreation activity for a, a small sector, and I don't really know how many, and I do, and one of my comments was going to be, yes, uh, on the national and local trends, yes, pickleball is a hot thing. I understand that. But, um, ho- honestly, there's a lot of city improvements that we need to have, and we are improving a lot from having attended all these city council meetings most recently, that you guys are really attending, attending to recreational things. So I really have a, a bone about that one, and honestly, um, uh, maybe a pickleball club will come up where they have some courts and, and people can pay a fee, and, and it doesn't have to be a whole lot of money, um, but anyhow, um, my sister lives in a small town, but she, there's a university there that's, uh, better funded than Harvard, okay, endowment and stuff, and so she can always play pickleball, you know, within, within that area. So enough on that, but, um, my input on recreation was really, many people walk, use the sidewalks in neighborhoods, they jog, they bike, kids to adults, that's probably the number-one recreation thing in, in, within, people within our, our city. Um, yes, like I said, there's national trends or whatever, and there are pe- the people that use the, the facilities, they're, they end up having input, and of course, that's where park and recreation kinda responds to that segment of the people of the overall city population that actually, you know, uses those specific recreation facilities. But, and, and I also understand, like I said, about out-of-towners, coming for weekend events and having tournaments and all that kinda stuff, and I think you, you all have been very, very cognizant of that, and that's why the Town Madison facilities and all this other stuff has been, been going on. Homeowners, though, also are facing increases on their property taxes each year, and I'd like to really see us, you know, ninety-some percent of people that aren't using the recreation facilities and, and maybe not going to the baseball games or whatever, have the improvements on the streets and sidewalks and whatever.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer.
And that's why I'm out of town, sorry.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Karen's District. I'm gonna talk about the OLED rights, okay? They have failed in many of the older neighborhoods. You guys are aware. I mention it at every council meeting, okay? We realize the poles are too far apart, and the, and it's made it unsafe for many neighborhoods, okay? It's the older neighborhoods. Um, this is safety. Why are we installing pickleball courts at Hexagon? We've been told it's gonna be for fire and police, now it's recreational, now we're paying for a gym over there. We paid, I think, six million dollars in November for the Hexagon twenty-three-A building. We've heard it's gonna be everything, but the first things to go in are pickleball courts? Come on, we need our roads paved, we need the sidewalks. You wanna know why I'm unhappy? I can't walk from my house to Kroger. I can't bike anymore because you're taking out the sidewalks. You've taken out this sidewalk. We just want health and safety for the current citizens. I've lived here twenty years. My choice is not pickleball courts, but I did put this up on the neighborhood site, and over two-hundred-and-fifty people answered it, and mostly we're looking for sidewalks and roads. Safety in our neighborhoods, you're not giving that to us. You are not. All of you are not giving it, 'cause you all bob your head, yes, 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 and you do nothing about it. Instead, we get no-bid contracts from recreation. There's no bid on this. So, I mean, I just don't understand it. Okay, contracts, the contracts that are, we're doing, you're saying start immediately, but state law is seventy-two hours you can cancel a contract, so I don't even know how, and I believe there's like a ten or fourteen day with the state before you can start a contract, because you have to give the people time to appeal it legally. And we've always had that, right? I don't know if it's been taken away, but I see many of these things over, it starts immediately. Is that something new? Did they take away the seventy-two hours to cancel contracts or what? Okay, the archaic, barbaric way we're putting in sewers is to flood other parts, other neighborhoods, and it's neighborhoods you're flooding. For this shanty town, you took out all that ground. Am I unhappy about it? Yes, it's my neighborhood. Of course I'm unhappy.
Told you.
Now, Renee, excuse me?
You said you were unhappy.
I'm unhappy with that, that I'm not safe in my own neighborhood. Renee, you had a front-page paper about resigning from the chess club. Before I came here tonight, I looked at the Secretary of State, and the chess club says, Agent Renee Bartlett. Is there, what's going on with that nonprofit that you're involved with? I mean, that is a conflict of interest if you're sitting on the council with a nonprofit in Madison City. And I'd like to know why you made the front page of the paper that you were stepping off.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Then we will close general public comments. Um, Ms. Laney's Business and Announcements. I don't know if you wanna address, uh, Mr. Boone's question about what we were planning to do on zoning and taking up comprehensive zoning. I don't know if he was here at the last meeting when you...
Yeah, so we're in process of doing the comprehensive zoning plan, and it's been in process for a long time. It should, by the end of this summer, be in place, which we're looking, as a council mayor, to include some of the things you're talking about, especially when you look at some of the properties south of Journey Middle School, which can be developed, you know, so we are cognizant and looking at those types of things as we move forward, but we